Thank you everyone for your patience. We have a few technical things going on up here.
It's Jennifer's fault.
I want to welcome Hamburg Sun, John, thank you for coming. A lot of kids, a lot of our students are here for various reasons, whether you're here for the board, whether you're here as a board requirement or for your presentation. I really want to thank you and then going on next door still, or is they done? Please, are they done next door?
The drive.
Drive.
Right, is the parent information night for six, seven, and eight? So if you hear some conversation next door, that's what it is. I will, I just wanted to put that up there. Please note that what is not in the irregular memorandum is an addendum. I put it up here just so you have a chance to see it because there is no, there is not a paper copy of this addendum and I wanted you to have an opportunity to see that.
There we go. Alright, I'm all set. Alright, I pounded gavel.
Do it!
Okay.
Call the meeting to order, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna start off with a robotics presentation, Mr. Smith and students.
Pull your mic up a little.
Pull my mic up.
Yeah. Well, my name's Brian Smith. I'm a part-time tech teacher, I've been here for four years now. Actually, first off, I wanted to, on behalf of Mr. Jones, Mr. Sam, and the other tech teachers, acknowledge and thank our administrators and Laura Felman for purchasing a new compressor for us in the tech department. At the end of last year, ours broke and made things a little difficult at the end of last year and this year because a lot of our tools run off the air compressor, so a lot of the plasma cutter and the diagrams we use. So, thank you. And also, I want to thank other community members for his generous donation of a new tool chest. As he walked in, I put it over here. This is so new, he brought this here yesterday for us. Mr. Canfield from Canfield Landscaping Nursery just donated this to us yesterday. And we want to thank him for that.
So the board will want to step back?
Yes, okay, so it was just so new.
Alright, it's perfect, I'm glad you brought it to show us.
And it's actually stocked with tools.
Really?
From another, actually not community member, but a guy, Adam Hoffman's used tool truck donated. I mean, it's full, like multiple sets of wrenches and pliers and screwdrivers and socket sets, so. Very generous, from him, all new, brand-new stuff, so. Just wanted to acknowledge them. But I just, four years part-time here, I'm really excited to be here because of my colleagues, the students, and the community as well, because of things like that, so. All the other great things we're doing with the chopper class, I'm involved with FFA and why we're here tonight, the new robotics team, so. Last year, Kelly Morgan-Larosa secured a grant through West New York STEM Hub to help fund this robotics team. So, this year, after we got the money, bought the kit, we entered the competition, paid the entry fees and all, and we started building. We just started building it this summer, so we kind of got a late start. They revealed that this, that year's game in September. So we had a little bit of a late start, but we got it done and went to a competition two Sundays ago. But let me just tell you a little bit about the first tech challenge. What we, we entered this competition, it says up there, the first tech challenge is what we did. Grade 7th through 12th teams of middle school and high school age students are challenged to design, build, and program a robot to play a floor game against other teams' creations. And so, every year, there's a different game. This was just programming the robot. So we built the robot, they came in over Christmas break. We, you know, stayed late after school a lot of days. Now, before Christmas break, this was, we programmed the robot, both for, there's an autonomous period and then a robot-controlled period. So that was programming day. Then, at the actual competition, it's more than just building robots. They had to, they were preparing here for a presentation. They, our team of five students there, right before a panel of judges, and did a 10-minute presentation about everything from, right from day one to being here at the competition. And that was followed by five minutes of questions and answers from the panel of judges. The students were great. I wasn't able to say anything, prompt them or anything. They went before the board, the panel, and they did their thing and they did great. So that was before we even got in the ring. Then, they had to pass a bunch of inspections for the robot and what the robot can do. And then, it was on to the competition. So this is Corning Painted Postal High School. They had this huge gym set up where, those are the two playing fields. And then, on the other side of the gym were the staging areas where these teams, you know, they had big displays of their robots and all this stuff. We had our tables set up with our robot, and that was about it. We're very new, so now that we went there and saw what it's all about, we'll be prepared next year for bigger, better things. So this was the actual competition. You're paired up with another team, so it's the red team against the blue team. So they're two different schools, they're in what's called an alliance. And there's all kinds of ways to score points for your team, so. Every, every match, you're paired up with a different alliance partner. Sometimes you might be against that other team in another, in another match. But you just work together and try to score points for your alliance. And we did six qualification matches. The first two matches, we had some technical difficulties. Robot didn't work. Made a few onsite changes and got it running. And for three of the last four matches, we, we won, three out of the four. So they did a fantastic job coming back from, you know, from nothing. We ended up placing 16th out of 21 teams. And, uh, the reason I showed this one right here was because we're mostly 7th graders, although one is a 9th grader. And this other team in the green shirts over on the right, they are from, they're seniors from Nichols. And I just wanted to show the, you know, the age difference there. So when our 7th graders get to be, you know, seniors, they're gonna be dominating this competition. So, but because of our perseverance. Because of their perseverance and, uh, we were the youngest, we're the youngest team and the newest team, the judges awarded us an award. This is how, this is the judge's award. This is our robot that's on here. Alright, so we programmed it, so there's one, one student is controlling the actual drive motors. And the other student is controlling the arm and the clock. So, they were, they learned all about programming, clock programming, coding and stuff like that, so. We were able to compete and they, there were, there were some robots at the competition that didn't even move, so. We did very well. Part of the competition. What's that?
What is the award that you just gave?
It's, it's, they call it the judge's award, just for the outstanding effort, perseverance, that kind of thing, so. So one of the, the goals of the game was to stack these blocks, these foam blocks in the, in the goals. So you just wanted to grab them and stack them. Really, I just wanted to have you guys, ask these guys any questions about anything. A big part of this next year, a big part of this next year is gonna be what they, they want. Part of the competition is what they call outreach. It's, we're in the process of securing some corporate sponsors, so we can get additional funding. And they have the basic kit now, but next year, we're gonna design our own robot and... It's really tricky to control this. They did a really good job.
That is great.
You guys have any questions? We have Samuel Brock, Ali, and Mura Eisenberger, and two other students who are not here. Kim Carey and Joel Underline, the other team, so.
I hope I'm not, oh, I'm so sorry. I hope I'm not asking you to repeat this, but how long did it take you to build that? And program it, did you say?
We only, we only had one.
You only had a month? Wow.
We were pressed for time, so. And the judges knew that because they were on their presentation and they were...
Yeah.
... impressed, helped pass, we pulled everything together, being so young and new.
That is awesome.
So you build it, you program it, and then you run it, all three? Wow, impressive.
How much does the kit cost?
Kit? There's, there's cell phones, and that's how it works with the controllers, it uses Wi-Fi, so. We had to get cell phones, we had to get the actual parts kit for that. We ended up spending like $800, $900 for just the kit. And then there were fees for entering competitions, getting our team. Our team number is 14026.
So what do you think your budget is for next year?
Next year, we're gonna need, we're gonna need that again.
Okay.
Because we want to do another one of those qualifier tournaments. And we want to build our own instead of just putting together a kit. So we're gonna be able to use a lot of this stuff next year, but we want to add to it.
So one of the conversations we had next door at the parent information night for middle school was a new after-school club. Can you just talk about that briefly?
Well, because we have almost all 7th graders involved in this now, it's, they're just a year ahead of the 6th graders that are gonna come in. And we're gonna promote doing robotics right from the start of the year. Have them come in and drive it around, like first week for the kids to see. Try to get them more interested and get them all excited about it. And show them around the rooms, all the stuff we give you.
Maybe you could drive down hallway.
Yeah.
Are you doing any other competitions this year?
No, that one was the last qualifier for, actually this past weekend, they went to Ewoka. And then that was, that was the regional, and then the national one was in Michigan, so. And we were with, the partners we were teamed up with, a thing that they, they push is this gracious professionalism. They go out and find teams to be partners with, and that will help you score. There's teams that didn't get a lot of points, but their alliance partner helped them through, so they made it on through the next competition, so. The awards count as points, so there's a lot that goes into it, so. Next year, I think we'll go to part of it.
Excited, good job.
It's really exciting.
What?
Oh, I don't.
What?
Snacks.
Oh, come on, loser.
No, I'll see you, Sandy.
Starting getting a little... Delivering.
Oh, good.
No. To do what? I had nothing to do with this.
That's cool.
Oh, wow, I mean. Super cool. Somebody's gotta be.
I have my daughters, I wouldn't leave, I guess. She wouldn't let me see it.
Should've made her student present.
There you go.
Hello there.
Yeah.
Anxiously awaiting, I haven't been able to see this yet.
You banged the gavel a couple times?
Sure.
It's not the one you're gonna see till you see the other one.
Okay.
She can share it with you?
No.
Wow.
After the robots, because we all like the robots. Freshman Academy now.
Alright, are we ready? Up next, we have PSA Freshman Academy, Ms. Costanzo and students.
Well, good evening, my name is Amber Costanzo.
Hi, I'm Marissa Koenig.
And we have the privilege of teaching freshman academy this year. And this year was structured a little differently. Scheduling-wise, last year, as the first year of the course began, the course was scheduled every other day all year long. And so, due to scheduling constraints and flip-flopping it with health, the idea was presented to teach the course as a one semester course, and the course meets every day. And I love it, I love that I get to see them every day. And I'm very lucky to be able to teach it with Marissa because we've been next-door neighbors in the English department, I think, for a week over 10 years, yeah.
So we work well together.
We do.
A lot of collaboration.
So... So because this is a humanities course, the curriculum adheres to the New York State Common Core standards and ELA. So that's why the two of us teach it.
Um, it's a seminar-style course that we use a book called The Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. And we use those chapters throughout the book to help foster our curriculum, help foster our conversations with the kids. We try to create a safe, open forum where the kids can discuss and actually do a lot of problem-solving for themselves.
And we feel like it's a wonderful stepping stone for them, coming from a middle school environment, you know, to learn about the skills that they need to be successful academically, as well as successful just collaboratively, working with groups. We focus on a lot of leadership development in the course. There's a lot of collaboration, we have public speaking. We have our students behind us who are going to talk because you probably want to hear a little bit more from them than you do from us, so.
I'm Camille Proffitt, I'm a freshman at Eden Junior Senior High School. Freshman Academy is a half-year course, it meets every day for a full class period. And in the class, we read a book called The Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens by Sean Colley. And it thoroughly explains what the seven habits are to help students who are transitioning into that high school life and teenage role in life. Those lessons include such as the personal bank account and relationship bank account to help students get a better relationship with not only themselves, but others. We did projects this year called Current Events where we would pick an event happening in our world from the past three months that related to teens in a way. Like a teen helping or donated to a homeless shelter or a blanket drive. And we would write, talk about them, and research them, and how it relates to our class freshman academy. We also kept, we would do journals in class, sometimes every day, a week, sometimes maybe every other day. And there were questions such as like, if you could pick someone to go back in time and meet, who would you pick and why? Or what was like your favorite book and why? And stuff that's like more personal to you. And we did collaborative activities such as like teamwork where we played, we did games to help work with teamwork, like cup stacking game, where only you could use a rubber band and strings to stack the cups. And a game where you could not talk, but you had to make a sandwich. Everyone had like a piece of food taped on their backs, and you had to line up in the order of the sandwiches without talking. It was really fun. We also had guest speakers in the semester. There were two of our foreign exchange students came in and told us about being a foreign exchange student and what it's like to go to another country and be around students who are not necessarily like you. We also did technology-based learning, but we used computers and iPads to help gain a sense of technology since our world today is progressing so much technology. And the biggest thing we did this year was public speaking, having a speaking project every single quarter and month. You could speak in front of our peers, our class. And it helped gain a sense of confidence and also ability to speak in front of others. And the final thing we did in our semester in this quarter was our PSA video project where we had a group of students who would, we created a video on a certain topic all by ourselves, either texting while driving, family issues, bullying, anything that can relate to teens, and we worked in a group, we edited it, and we presented it to our class. And overall, the class teaches you how to step into the adult world and the teenage world and to grow into a more effective person.
Good job.
Good job.
Your public speaking obviously paid off. That was pretty impressive.
When they show the videos, they'll be on the screen. And you turn and talk.
Hello, my name is Brandy Pye. I'm a freshman at Junior Senior High School, Eden Junior Senior High School. And I'd like to start by saying I love freshman academy so much. Like, it's my, probably my favorite class, and this is why. I think of the brain of having three sides. The first side is where all your academics and your knowledge goes for school, like math, science, English. All of that stuff, all of your knowledge from school goes into the first part of the brain. The second part is your creative side with arts and music and acting. And all of those creativeness, all of the creativeness in your world goes into the second part of the brain. But then there's this third side that nobody really talks about, but it's still there. And that's where stress and anxiety, communication skills, responsibilities, your boundaries, your comfortness, your goals, everything that categorizes you as a human. All of that fits into that third group. But there's no classes, or really a lot of classes, to really focus on that third point. But freshman academy is that class to focus on those and to make our experience as high schoolers much more pleasing and enjoyable. It helps us learn how to communicate, how to relax more, how to focus on our goals and responsibilities, but still being the best, the best people and students that we could be. And that's why freshman academy is beneficial, because freshman academy is still important to have. And everything that we learned in freshman academy can benefit us now and all through high school and the rest of our lives, so.
Good job.
Nice job, Maddie.
Thank you.
So before she speaks, the cup game that was referenced before is the picture on the left. So that's an example of synergy where they have to work together, and they were not allowed to talk. And so you'll notice that it was hard to get them all. There were 19 students, all holding a string, and they had to work together collaboratively to stack the cups. So while it seems, you know, inconsequential that, you know, they're stacking styrofoam cups, they are learning effective communication skills, both verbal and non-verbal. They're learning how to work together as a team, because if one person pushes and the other person pulls, we have to figure out how are we going to accomplish this.
My picture is over on the right, and this had to deal with begin with the end in mind. We did this early on in the semester where the kids broke up into groups and we had conversations about now that they've made it into high school and now that they know what junior high is all about, what skills do they need to have in order to survive junior high? And then, the whole idea is to know what your goal is before you start taking the baby steps to get to your goal. So what they had to do with their groups then is decide what the five most important skills are to survive junior high. And they made posters and they put them all in the upstairs where junior high had the majority of their classes, so that they could pass on their knowledge to the younger kids.
I am Robert. I'm a freshman in Ms. Koenig's freshman academy class. And when Ms. Koenig asked me to speak to the board about freshman academy, I told her of course I would. But for some reason, when she gave me my card saying, "Speak about what you love so much about freshman academy", I had the most difficult time finding words to use. So I looked through my freshman academy notebook just for some inspiration. And I found this journal entry I'd like to read to you. The prompt was, "What is your favorite subject and why?" And I responded, "My favorite subject is freshman academy", and I'm not just saying that so I get full credit on this journal. This is my favorite class because I feel that the content of this class is more useful to me than any other. I have learned how to be a better person and how to better treat people. Not only do we learn how to do things, I personally have learned things about myself, and with this new knowledge, I can push myself to pursue the things I'm good at and the things I like. Honestly, I walked into this class thinking it would be useless and I have no idea what it would be about. However, this class has been the best thing for my attitude towards myself and others. This class pushes and propels me to be my best self and not anything else. Without freshman academy, I probably wouldn't have the courage to stand up here and speak to you today. And just to wrap it up, everybody in this room has been in a school district before, obviously. So inevitably, we've all heard the question, "Where are we gonna use this in real life?" And what I love most about freshman academy is that you cannot ask that question because anything you learn in it, you will, you can use tomorrow and you can use in 30 years.
Thank you.
Marissa and I, we took these from two of the students behind you. So we asked the students to create a priority pyramid that ranks, you know, what at this point in time is the most important to them. And then hanging underneath it, we asked them, it's the selfie challenge, where they have to take a selfie where they helped someone else. And we got a variety of...
Selfless act.
Yeah, selfless act. And then the other document is the students had to come up with their own mission statements. And this is something that they could hang in their lockers, post in their agendas, just something to kind of follow as they progress during the day.
A contract. Guidance.
So on the left, you'll see habit seven, sharpen the saw. Our peace committee created a tree where students were able to put ornaments on there to remember a loved one. And so you'll see members of freshman academy writing down things and participating in that. And then on the right...
On the right, this is seek first to understand, then to be understood. That was one of the habits that really focused on communication. So when the kids ended up doing their PSAs, they had to use a lot of the habits and we had to incorporate the habits within our project. In this case, this particular group decided to enlist the help of one of our guidance counselors, Mr. Minton. So that was their meeting with Mr. Minton, trying to explain what it is they needed him to do, wanted him to do, would he be willing to do this for him, and, you know, trying to convey what it is that they were gonna try and do with their project.
And so Blaze Whitmer is going to explain to you what the PSA project was about. And then we brought, we have them attached, so you can see two of them.
Well, hi, I'm Blaze Whitmer, a student in Mrs. Costanzo's second-period freshman academy class. Now, as Camille brushed up on a little bit before, our final assignment was about creating a PSA on issues that teenagers face today. So our classes were divided into groups, and each group selected an issue that teenagers faced. And then they presented it in front of the class and gave everyone information and it spread awareness about these, about these topics that most people don't really bring up in normal conversations. And I learned, honestly, I learned a lot about the subtle things that people don't really pick up on that can show that things aren't okay and that people need to, people need support. Well, without any further ado, I present to you...
... a reach of about five minutes in duration. The students were also required to do some research before presenting this. So you will see citations here. They also had to do a disclaimer just to let everyone know that anybody who was harmed and things like that, so.
You guys are all really great public speakers.
Yeah, when I was a freshman...
The students were allowed to choose their own groups as well. And they were given ample time in class for both research and videotaping. Good?
Good.
Videos were also posted to the class.
Maybe all our pictures.
One of the things I would like to do every day.
If you recognize anyone, say this.
You can say someone I got it. But rights and copyrights are from that video.
Don't be afraid to come on there tomorrow.
Like, why does it give us the last minute?
I know, like, before we play. Oh, I got my foot. Yeah, I forgot my way. Okay, I gotta see you later. Okay. Bye. Emily, get over here. I don't know why you think this is acceptable. This isn't good. You need to do better. Why do my parents hate me so much? Oh, that's okay. Did the others give you a pass or no? Okay. All right. Dad, Dad, Dad. Emily, my dad is here. He's been sick for a while, but he's not breathing. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. Can you send an ambulance?
Maddie? Hey, Maddie? Can you answer that question that we just talked about?
Uh, no, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, my parents have been fighting all weekend.
That sucks. I'm always here to help.
Yeah, well, my dad keeps getting drunk, and then he drives with us, and my mom's not there.
You should talk to your parents and see what you can do to help.
Yeah, sure. Dad? Dad?
When parents are bargaining with this bill, it can often cause effects such as depression, anxiety, and other health issues.
Children have views, so have no views, no anxiety, and unexplained injuries.
Children and parents going through divorce can be lonely, unhappy, and anxious.
Habit five, seek first to understand. To then be understood, explain secondly, have to understand, solve the situation, to communicate back with the other situation.
For example, in my situation, I never communicated with my teacher or my friends, so no one could understand my point of view and understand what I'm coming from.
And in my situation, I never communicated my side of the story with my friends, and I never knew what my situation was, what was going on, but I was alone.
On the other hand, I communicated with my friend to help and try and let them know what my situation was, so they can help me in getting through the situation.
Good job.
So this one is on texting while driving.
This is good, texting while driving.
We're ready, ma'am.
Okay.
How is she?
Her conditions are stable for now.
I was only checking my phone for a minute.
And how old are you?
Seventeen.
But all of this could have been prevented.
The National Safety Council reports that telephone use while driving leads to 1.6 million crashes each year.
Eighty-eight percent of young millennials engage in at least one risky behavior behind the wheel in the past thirty days.
Texting while driving skyrocketed to sixty percent for nineteen- to twenty-four-year-olds in the year 2017.
Six in ten teen crashes involve destructive driving.
Hello?
Nearly 330,000 injuries occur each year from accidents caused by texting while driving.
Texting while driving is six times more likely to cause an accident than drunk driving.
Anything you say can and will be used against you in the court of law.
States across the country have implemented laws targeting destructive driving habits.
I was only checking my phone for a minute.
And how old are you?
Seventeen.
How is she?
Her conditions are stable for now.
Each day in the United States, approximately nine people are killed by destructive driving.
Yeah, she's not too long. Yeah. All right, I love you now.
Sign here, please.
The consequences of texting while driving can be devastating.
Texting while driving relates to habit two, begin with the end in mind, because when you pick up your phone, you aren't thinking about the outcome or how many people you could hurt.
In reality, texting while driving is like walking with your eyes closed. You can't see where you're going, and you are going to run into things for yourself and others.
Texting while driving also relates to habit three, put first things first, because texting while driving can wait. Your safety and the safety of other pedestrians will be more important than any text you receive.
Taking your eyes off the road for only a few seconds is putting you and anyone around you in danger. Destructive driving is a bad thing and needs to be prevented. Texting while driving is destructive driving and is one of the leading causes of teenager injuries. For more info on destructive driving, visit www.ndd.org.
You've got to mention texting credits. Talk about giving credit.
Who's driving? You're a driver.
Do any of you have any questions, either from me or Mars or...
How long have you been doing Freshman Academy at the school district?
This is the second year. I got to teach it last year, and so this is my first year.
First year? I just think it's great. I work for Bosse's, and I work with a high school program with at-risk kids at Baker Road. I'm special ed side of the alternative side of the, opposite side of the building. And this is like something that I feel like our kids could really benefit from. So I've got some things up here to take back to my people. And try to, yeah, because I just think it is. I mean, it was a whole different world when I was in ninth grade.
Right.
But this touches on some very serious issues. All your kids were, Maddie, I know you from diving, so what you do in Freshman Academy helps Maddie in her diving, too. I saw that. And she's always very helpful at practice with other kids. Very good.
And I know I speak for both of us when I say that we want to teach this, because with the rigor of the upper-level classes, which we are so used to teaching, lessons like this, it's different, right? It's a different type of challenge, but it's extremely important.
Excellent job. Excellent job.
And I just want to thank you for coming. I had no idea what Freshman Academy was. I thought it was just study skills or something.
No, not at all.
It really isn't. And I am impressed with how much you pack in to one semester. And you guys must have really enjoyed this. And great job, all four of you. You were great tonight. Good job. Can we do a picture?
No, she's got it at home.
That's great.
I had that one, babe.
It's green hair. It's a great one.
I read the adult version.
Both of us.
I know. That was super cool.
Very exciting. Hi, how are you? No robots? We really like robots. Two Tuxtephalo. That is beautiful. When's your birthday? April. Oh, his? I don't know. Your birthday's here. Am I up? April 2nd. Oh, that's my birthday. Very fun. Are we okay? Yeah.
Okay, hi, I'm Shawn Johnson, Director of People's Services. And this is Jen Currier. I don't know if a lot of you know her, but she is our school psychologist for the seven-through-twelve building and my CSC chair. And Jen, and then Joe Weiss is my other school psychologist. He's not here tonight. And he's the CSC chair for K through six. So we worked on the special ed plan, which as a board, it is in your board policies to have a special ed plan in place. And the reason is, it helps support all the funding and everything, and you have to kind of have it on file. So we made sure we had it on file this year. So we're going to go through it real quickly and kind of let you know what it's about. And if you have any questions, just ask it and we'll go along.
Okay, so we start with our programs, and we're going to go with, start with our least prescriptive, so that is the least amount of special ed service and the most amount of general ed service. So we would start with related services, for example, speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, audiological services, orientation and mobility if the student has vision issues. There's more examples also in your paper. I'm just gonna skip this. Then we have consult teacher services, so that is two teachers in a classroom, a general education teacher, and a special ed teacher. And the special education teacher services, the students in the classroom provides any support for the teachers or the students with disabilities and inevitably the students without disabilities. There are legal requirements to how many students can be on the special education teacher's caseload. It's not supposed to be over twenty. And then there's time and frequency requirements as required by law. Our new continuum, and I should go back, our continuum is changing. Sometimes we offer everything on the continuum. Sometimes we don't. It depends on the needs of the students. And this year, we added integrated co-teaching. So in this program, there are two teachers again in the classroom, like consultant teaching, a general education teacher, and a special education teacher. But in this instance, they are, I hate to say equals, because they are in the other situation, too, but they have dual responsibilities for planning and grading. They really own that classroom together and do everything together. So we have done that this year in the fifth grade. Third, sixth, not up yet at the high school in the elementary building. The resource room, that's also on the continuum. The requirement is five students, maximum of five students to one special ed student. In the resource room, the special education teacher works with the students on their goals, reading, math, writing, organization. And in the high school, it's scheduled like a regular block of time, usually every day of the year. Then we start pulling the students a little bit more away from the general ed population with the self-contained classes. And as you can see, we have fifteen to one, fifteen students to one teacher. There's twelve students to one teacher to one aide, eight students to one teacher to one aide. And it just, it starts with being academically based, the fifteen to one, that's what we have right now. And that is, the needs become more severe or more involved. Then the ratio, the staff goes up, the ratio of the children go down. And then the preschool.
Yep, and, yeah, and with preschool, we are responsible in the district to educate three- and four-year-olds that are in our district boundaries. And they come to the Committee of Preschool Special Ed, which is what is approved once a month, because you have to approve it, so the county will pay for it. They pay for the evaluation, and they pay for the services, so there's no costs to the district. But I'm like the middleman. I have to make sure that they get evaluated, and I have to make sure that they get the necessary services afterwards. And it's the same kind of continuum. They get related services, speech, OTPT, counseling. Or if they need a more structured type of setting, they might be in an integrated classroom in preschool. We don't have that here. Like, a lot of the students with related services are in our GLP preschool program. So the speech therapist will get them, or the OT. If they need more, there's outside placements that they go to. We do have children out there. Typically, we use the Children's League in Springville that services kids, so they stay in that program. Most of the kids in there are somewhere on the autism spectrum, and they get those services. And they can go half-day or full-day. Transportation is provided to them through busing, but not through our busing. It's through the county, and they contract every year with a different bus service. So that's what our preschool is. But we are responsible just to make sure they get the services.
Shawn, can you just talk for a moment? What's the biggest change you've seen in the past five, ten, or fifteen years with your preschool?
Well, with my preschool, first of all, the numbers are incredible. I mean, right now...
Because you don't really think about us educating three- and four-year-olds typically, right?
No.
But we are.
We are definitely, the increase, have to be totally honest with you, are behavioral needs. That is the biggest increase we have. I have three- and four-year-olds with significant behavioral needs. So that's why I use, if you want, like a six-one-one program. Due to lack of language, due to a lot of other things going on, but I have never seen the amount of students with behavioral needs as I have. And this is probably my twenty-ninth year as a CPSC chair, and it used to be speech, 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 not anymore. It's behavioral. Where these kids are having one-on-one aides in a small setting. Ultimately, they're going to come to us, so I am a pro, pro, pro for early intervention, and that's what we try to push for.
Thank you.
But our numbers are really high for small districts. When I started here, I think I had five, and we've been up to like thirty-two. When you look at a class, what, eighty-eight?
Right.
That's a lot of kids.
Yep, so next, well, point C is extended rule year, that summer school. Bosse's usually, Bosse sends the calendar. Typically, it's right after the Fourth of July to two weeks before when school starts. Usually, oh, ours. We have had a summer school program for about six years. It services our students with developmental disabilities and some of our more intense disabilities. Last year, the program was held at Old Collins due to all the construction. And this coming year, it will be there again since we're still under construction. But it's nice because we use our teachers, our staff, therapists, so it provides also a nice transition. These students usually struggle maintaining behaviors and skills academic over that summer break. So this just keeps the routine and helps the students grow and continue their progress. We do have some students who our program isn't appropriate, either by age or just where they are at, where their needs are, so they are serviced by Bosse's as well. Any questions about that? All right, now we get to come to data.
Yes, when we talk about data. The one thing I just want to say about the summer schools, there are not many districts that have their own special ed summer school program. I mean, it's very unique that we have it for such a small district. And I'm not going to say this as Laura might. I think we fund pretty much of ourself, but because we get other districts paying tuition to come to our program. So that helps offset the costs that we get every year. E, data, the state wants us to put this in the plan. What you're looking at is overall, at this, it's October, Fed Day, when we did this, there were 210 students in this district with a disability. And this would be school age that you're seeing. age that you're seeing on here. And what this data is telling you is the percentage of students that are in the regular class setting that are special ed. So, the state wants you to have 80% or more, high percent in there. What I have to bring you back to, I went back, I was telling Jen, the data for the school year 14, 15 is the last time the state came out with, okay, who's doing it, who's not doing it. I went back through all the data, because I knew we had good data, and I checked Erie County, every single school in Erie County. We were the only district that got the highest marks in all three areas.
The highest marks for what?
The only district that was...
The highest marks for what?
That the majority, you had to have 65% of your students with special needs in regular ed classrooms for 80% or more of their day. And we were the only district, it was yellows, all these yellows.
There was colors, I remember.
Yeah, that color chart, I just have to plug it right now, because I know it's old data, but when I went back and checked for this year, we're even higher than that. So, we were the only one. All Willmore players, nobody but us, we were the only ones that did it. Sorry for the chair joke. So, that's what that data is showing. And then if you look down where it says separate school, this is the only thing that's kind of hit us this year. That's your private placement, Grandoff, Falk, Gaywick, these are more behavioral needs schools. We have the most kids out that we've ever had since I've been here, it's my 13th year. We have pretty, pretty high needs of behavioral kids in the district that just need a setting, a structure that's, you know, can give them what they need, and they're succeeding there. That's the good thing, they are succeeding there. And BOSI's is added into the top data, because our kids, when they're in the BOSI's classroom, there's typical peers in the building, so they get pushed into a lot of those settings. So, I was very proud of our data there, and on the bottom, it just shows you kind of where our kids are at, you've got your numbers there, and our preschoolers. Right now, we're all getting itinerant services, I actually really don't have anybody in an outside setting for that. So, that's our data, which I say is the district, even though everybody says, oh, God, the numbers of special ed, but they're all here, the majority of them are here, and they're educated within the classroom. And the last thing, well, before you... Is just, it kind of breaks down, you know, there's 13 disabilities that New York State gives us, and whenever I classify student agendas, we go through the parents, and we say there's 13 disabilities that are available, what does your child fit best? But I thought it could be very interesting to look at the numbers. And the biggest number, other health impaired, typically the kids in that area are your kids, they're children with AFD or some other sort of, sometimes mental health disabilities, because it's very hard, as cheerpeople, to say your child has an emotional disturbance. So, we kind of put a lot of kids, the state will give us that opportunity, put them other health impaired. So, our numbers are high there, it's not a medical need, it's usually more of a mental health.
But you could put a medical need under OHI too.
Oh, yes, we have the kids with medical needs under there too.
Right, like a kidney transplant or something?
Yeah. And then our numbers with autism, some of our autistic children are also in other health impaired too. These are children with true classification of autism. So, that gives you kind of our numbers there. And then Jen will just go through the last part of the plan that you have to know about, that the state helps us to do.
So, we evaluate the, our specialized program by graduation rates, which, that's a whole nother, how the kids can graduate, and all their different ways to...
Career.
...take exams and their criteria, so that is ever-changing, but we use that. Our classification rate, the least restrictive environment, so how many kids that we have, how much time they're in gen ed, and, you know, we want to give the students the least amount of service to be productive and be successful, because when they leave us, they won't have, you know, that adult doing lots of things for them. So, we use that as well. Our dropout rate, parent feedback, and especially at the high school level, we use child-student feedback. They really, we have them, you know, from 6th grade, they'll come to our meetings, they should know their disability, their plan, what they need, what they don't need, so we also use their feedback to judge how we're doing and what they need as well. The board, our policies and practices, that ensures that we have enough space, enough teachers to can use our program, conduct our program. Also, with our constructional supports and materials, assistive tech devices, iPads, voice-to-print software, braille activations, which is any kind of technology that we need. And then our budget adds to all, no, if you want to look at it.
But the one thing I just want to point out real quick, because it's always a funny issue whenever they talk about that, that special ed, I've always felt that way, always had it defended, interesting, the state wants us to educate the majority of our kids in the classroom, like we're doing, we're doing an excellent job. But we don't get funding for that. We get the least funding possible because we're doing that. But yet, if we don't do that, I'm gonna get a red or a green, and I don't want a red or a green, I don't want a yellow.
So, they want you to do it, but they don't want to pay for it?
They don't want to pay for it. So, that is, special ed is not costly, it's that we don't get money for the most neediest children around. That's the facts what's going on in our state. So, you know, it's frustrating as a director and as a chairperson, because we know what's best, and what's best is that they're in there with their peers, and they're learning with their peers. But yet, I gotta try to keep 45 staff members employed, and, you know, all the services and technologies, so it's a really tough battle to keep that program going.
And I know it's not in your presentation, but could you just take a minute or two to talk about the Unified Sports? Because I think that that's such a fun topic to talk about.
We can pick up another sport.
Yeah, you picked up bowling.
Yes, we are gonna try bowling, but I'll start with basketball.
So, wait, why don't you just talk about what is it?
Oh, okay. So, we, this'll be third year in the...
Third year in the...
Basketball. It's through New York State's high school, whatever, it's letters me, thank you. And Special Olympics, and it pairs students with intellectual disabilities or with special needs with typical peers and athletes, and we come together, and by the grace of God, we all figure out how to play basketball. And, believe me, I wasn't sure how it was going to look, basketball is a hard sport, as you all know, and the Special Olympics really guides us and gives us guidelines and rules, and they want it to be as authentic as possible. And it has been, I can't, there are no words, really, I don't want to sound corny, of how wonderful Unified Basketball is for the typical peers who have been wonderful on the court, for the specialized students who now interact and have support from their gen ed peers who they never would have encountered because their paths just don't cross. It is unbelievable, and when you can see a girl who would not leave the side of the low wall and would throw the ball, and us adults are going to chase it, because I don't know why we do that, to playing a sport, like getting on the court and making a basket, it is unbelievable.
And I think from the parent perspective too, there was a parent, I don't know who the parent went to that said, I never thought I'd see my child.
Yes.
Could you just talk about that for a minute, because that one, I think, really resonated with me a lot.
Yes, I think we, I will speak for myself as a parent, you take for granted certain things your kids can do in sports teams they can be on, and all that, that entails the, you know, the sacrament and the friendship, the whole life it consumes, and for a lot of these kids, those parents don't have it, they never could envision their child wearing Indian jersey with a number on it, being on a court with...
And getting on a bus and going to another school.
Yes, that's interesting too.
And this parent actually thought.
Yes, yes, or never thought their child would like it, because they haven't had that opportunity to do that. So, it has brought a lot of joy to the parents as well, it is just, it's awesome.
Just to add on to Jen, she's doing a great job, but I think the other great thing is, not only for the special ed students, but the humbling experience it is for our gen ed athletes that, you know, especially a lot of them are used to being the best, walking around, you know, with everybody knowing them. And then, when Shawn's teachers had a Sweet 16 birthday party a couple months ago, and one of the gen ed kids came in and brought his athlete flowers on her birthday, and the mother, I mean, everybody was in tears, and when the mother said, "Thank you," he said, "Every girl should be given flowers on her 16, Sweet 16."
Oh.
And it's just equally just a humbling experience for everyone.
Yeah.
And so now, in a couple weeks, we are gonna try to bowl. So, we're all gonna see how that, how can that be right, if we can do basketball, we can throw a ball. With no bumpers.
No bumpers.
But we can use adaptive equipment, thank goodness, but we're gonna see how that goes, which is nice, because the athletes, people are afraid of basketball, gen ed students also, so hopefully this will happen.
But you can always find a bowling, a bowling alley.
Exactly, so hopefully this'll let a few other students get in, and Marissa, Michelle and I too like to use basketball for that student who would not be able to make a regular, you know, make a typical team here. And it has just been, it's been...
Marissa, now, they've gone red or wrong in this, so it started off, we got money from the state, okay, but it's dwindling.
Of course it is.
So, we had...
It wasn't actually from the state, it was from Special Olympics, so in the first year that you're involved, they would grant you a $2,000 grant, and then last year, it went down to 1,500, and this year, I think it's down to like 5,000. So, this, both teams are pretty much self-funded.
With the help of the boosters, we did...
Yeah, with the help of the boosters, the 5K.
This year, the help with our...
Completely funded by private funding.
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
And I just, from the Erie to BOSI's end of it, I've known of Shawn, and great reputation, and I will say, at the high school level, with who I work with, alt ed and special ed, Eden, we have very, very, very few students. I could list districts where we are inundated with students, and the few that we get are top-notch, so whatever you're doing...
We're only sending you the best.
You do. Trust me, I thank you, my 29 years at BOSI's thanks you for that.
You know, and I think the part of that too, that, not to forget, is that by keeping our students here, our gen ed students have a disability awareness in their own world every day, whereas there are some districts who do not keep their students, and so they don't recognize that, but...
No, they're very quick to...
To move them out, but that's not the case here.
Pay exorbitant amount of money to send them to us.
And you're nodding, you want to talk about that for a minute? Just, when you walk the school halls, no matter what building you're in, they're just integrated, they're a part of your day.
Yeah, I would say it's really nice to have, like, I don't know if I want to use the word diverse, but...
Mm-hmm, it's diverse.
Diverse, like, population in our schools, I know, like, with the college and stuff, like, you have to write about that and things like that, it's just nice to know people that are, that see the world a different way, like, I can learn so much from the special ed kids, just as much as they can learn from, like, the gen ed students.
That's a good point.
So, I think it's important, like, just, even going through the halls and, like, saying hi, like, you know that you made their day, and like, that just makes you, that makes yours too, like, it's just kind of like a mutual friendship that you can get.
That's a nice way to put it.
And from our perspective, the students I work with, they miss that, and I mean, they've made poor choices in their life, and that was, you know, a lot of why they were sent, but some school districts do, are very quick to get rid of, get rid of them.
And honestly, in cycles, it jumps at this, we have to be high, but some kids just need to not...
They need a smaller environment.
Yes, so it just, you know, it's the, it really is the student, and it's more than just the academics sometimes, when they're not here, they just, they just...
Too much stimulus.
It sounds like different or more intense.
But you do really good early intervention, which is very, very important.
You know, it's huge, and I have always strongly believed in it, but then I also thought, hey, we pay our county taxes, let's get the services that we need from it, and we, you know, I do 3K screening at GLP, so we pick up a lot of kids there too, because it's hard to get the word out, you know, unless, especially when this is your first child, and they're three years old, and they're not talking about anything. And if a pediatrician doesn't say anything, these poor parents, and then they show up at kindergarten, I'm like, oh my gosh, what are we gonna do? So, we really, really work hard on that. And just one more fact before we let you go, when you were talking about sending kids out, and I think you might not know this in the new, but we have five other districts paying tuition to come to our programs, because they're looking for places or whatever, they... And I look, and I'm like, I'm gonna keep this child, it would be easy, but I'm gonna take them, you know, we're gonna educate them, we're gonna give them everything we can, because we started that autism program six or seven years ago, and it's just been a feeder through GLP through the years, and now they're coming up. Next year, when the game that started, it'll all be up here next year, which is really cool, they've been able to stay in district the entire time, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have the budget presentations, athletics, debt service, and utilities. Is this yours or mine?
So, Marissa is setting up. In years past, my predecessor did the budget advisory team, and what we've chosen to do for this year is more of a board presentation style with some community workshops throughout the budget process. This is just the first of the budget presentations to the board, and then the community workshops will have these numbers incorporated into the big picture, so that those that are attending the community workshops will get a more overall feel instead of just targeted. These at the board meetings are meant to be targeted, specific to certain budget lines. And Marissa's the first one tonight to have her presentation.
Thank you, Marissa.
Mine's really easy, because I was told that there were no increases, but I was happy because for the first time, I was told there was no decreases. So, my budget presentation is really easy and really short, and that you can read on your own. It's a synopsis of what athletics teaches, and just in short, so the review that we're, or the year that we're currently in, Eden is offering 50 teams, that's 28 varsity teams, including our two new unified ones, 10 JV and 12 modified. We have seven programs that are currently combined with other districts, and those districts are North Collins, Gowanda, Lake Shore, and Springville. We have four teams that are currently sponsored through private funding, JV fall cheerleading, modified wrestling, unified basketball, unified bowling, and girls' ice hockey. So, that's five actually, sorry, can't count. I forgot about modified bowling, and I added them in today. We, as most of you know, I think we're pretty successful across the board academically as well athletically, and we have a number of former athletes that are currently competing in a variety of sports at the Division 1, 2, and 3 level, and we have already had a couple of signings this year for next year for our seniors. And, quick recap of the fall, the boys volleyball team won their first-ever state championship. Swimmer Michaela Shou, Shu?
Shai.
Shai, I always say it wrong, sorry. Qualified and competed at the Swimming States in the 100 free and 50 free. Girls volleyball won the C1 section title, and the boys cross-country team won the C2 section title. If you look at the proposal on the next page, like I said, for 2018-19, you will see no increase but no decrease. I was not gonna argue with Laura when she said no increase, because this was the first time ever that I heard the word no decrease, so I was extremely happy. You will note that the officials, I've budgeted for the same amount, while the official's contract does state that they do have a raise, I again was not gonna argue this point, and I think I can make it happen for next year, even though they are supposed to get a raise. I was extremely happy that my budget wasn't being cut.
And it's not something that we can control at a local level.
The official's contract is just like salaries of teachers and coaches, we can't control them, but I can make it work for next year, the following year, I will need a little money.
We'll talk.
Okay. So, everything is staying status quo as far as supplies, reconditioning, conference, and travel. Again, just to reiterate from last year, conference does not mean that I'm sending coaches to meetings or conferences, even though they would love to go. Conference and travel has to do with our state championships or our sectionals, anything, our bowling fees, any, any sort of dues that don't get included in the membership. The BOSI's is part of our state dues and our ECIC dues, and miscellaneous is our trainer, and again, that's our athletic trainer. And the misconception out there years ago was that I was hiring like a personal, personal weight person to come in and train our athletes, and that is not true. This is our trainer from the UB Sports Medicine, which we do receive a grant for, it's a $25,000 grant, they, we get the other, we pay the other half. So, it's a full-time athletic trainer who treats any of our injuries during our... our PE classes, or our sports, or the occasional club, whatever they hurt, she will treat it, she will take care of it, if you need a doctor's appointment set up, she will call and make the doctor's appointment for them, um, she also handles all of our concussion testing as well, and we do save a little bit of money in the fact that she is present at all football games, so we don't pay our school physician, our school chief medical officer.
I thought it was interesting at the Section Six meeting today, how the advisement from Section Six is to have an athletic trainer.
Yes, it's, it's...
In every school.
It, it's a huge disadvantage to not have a trainer, it's one of those avenues that I don't look at, in my previous years of being told that the budget had to be cut, I don't look at the trainer line, because it's that important to me, um, to send, especially in a, in a collision sport, um, I had more problems when I would send our teams away, and they would get injured, and there was no medical coverage there, and I had more issues with that of, than events that took place at our own building, um, I couldn't believe the amount of even, even modified football games, from going to the southern tier of schools that did not have a trainer, and in fact, during executive session at our meeting today, I brought up how at a regional contest in Rochester, our state championship volleyball team, I sent our kids to Rochester, I brought Kristen with me just as a friend and to go, and she ended up having to work that day, because a regional championship, they didn't have a trainer, they had no ice, they had nothing, and so I actually brought that up as another concern, because I don't know how you run...
A regional.
A regionals with that, um, but yes, there was, that's, that, so again, the proposal is for the same, if you flick to the next slide, um, it'll basically say about the officials' fees, I, I think myself and my coaches do a great job of communicating about any small roster sizes, we've made some really good decisions, um, as far as girls field hockey, girls soccer, and even boys football, that when we saw the roster sizes were dwindling, um, we went for another route, which was the seven, eight, nine modified level, and then a varsity level, and while I believe it helped, um, the growth of our program, I've actually seen it, our field hockey program numbers go up from this and become more successful, um, I also believe it's a financially responsible decision to do, and it's also the safer decision to do, so if you let me, um, we will continue to monitor those and make those decisions towards the end of the school year, um, we will also continue to speak with neighboring districts to see if they are interested in some of our lower number, or lower number of sports, especially in those that are just varsity only, like a track, like a tennis, like it used to be wrestling, but, um, we will continue to seek, um, see which districts would like to combine, and that is a source of revenue too, so, for instance, North Collins pays $400 a football player to come over to play for our district, um, Swimming Gowanda was 200 a student, so it's also a source of revenue for the district, and it allows us to continue to offer the amount of our, uh, sports that we do for our students, um, and lastly, I put this in every year, just so, um, parents don't think I'm ignoring them, but, um, request, if the district was ever to be at a stable financial situation, um, athletics would like to request restoring of non-league contests and tournaments, restoring of funds for equipment and uniform, and restoring the girls modified, boys modified track team, as well as the JV cheerleading. However, we do understand, we do understand, um, the district situation, so we are happy if you keep us status quo.
So just to go back, you can help me with the year that this was, the agreement in that year was to cut those things out of the athletic budget in order to maintain the number of teams?
Correct, I was initially asked to cut all modified.
So what year would that have been?
I want to say six years ago.
It was before mine.
It was before you, um, I was initially charged with, um, cutting of modified, all modified teams across the board, um, I don't believe that's the best way to run a program.
So you countered.
To develop a program, then it was, well, why don't you cut all JV teams, I countered with, um, cutting of non-league contest tournaments, um, and the five o'clock transportation.
And uniforms too?
Uh, uniforms, I never had.
You never had?
That was prior, I never had access to that, that was during Mr. Beato, I'm not sure when they got cut, um, it, it's a lot of work for the coaches, I have an amazing group of coaches, I also have a great community that I'm working in, so the, the parents are receptive to what we do, they drive a lot, they drive to and from tournaments, um, they drive to and from non-league games, and the coaches do a lot of fundraising and, um, but we make it work, um, so, we'd like stuff, but we understand the predicament that the district's in, so we are, we're happy with the status quo budget, if it can stay that way.
Questions from Marissa.
The trainer.
Yes.
Ever since I've known we have a trainer, half of her salary has been covered by a grant, who's the grant from?
The grant is...
And is it forever?
No, unfortunately not, this is the last year of the grant, it is from, um, actually it's from the NFL, and I believe that the NFL is going to start, um, showing more, um, commercials on it of what they are trying to do, um, they've given a lot of money across the country, um, currently, UB has stated that our, they will try to keep our bill around 25,000, we're getting a full-time trainer for that, um, I don't know if they can keep it, however, Erie One BOSEs, Erie Two BOSEs, now has a coser for an athletic trainer.
Which basically means that if two or more schools...
Yeah, that if two or more...
Can get the same service.
Yes, and it would be aidable to the district.
What's our aid ratio?
Um, so it is something that I'm looking in, if anybody knows, I do...
Which means that about 72% of it would be generated back in aid the following year.
So it would be, the, from what my understanding, the hours that I'm looking for is a little bit, it, it's more than that 25,000, but we would get that back in aid, but again, I'm still, they piloted it this year, I did not want to be the first, first person to jump on that, as there was a lot of questions that had to be answered, plus I knew we were, had the grant, I like our trainer, I think I can get our trainer to switch services, if that's the situation, um, but I wanted to see what the schools that bought into this coser, what their feeling was at the end of this year, so...
Schools that aren't represented by a trainer are, not, not only is it, as a parent, as, as a coach, a very complex situation, but truthfully, from a liability standpoint, what a, what a, you know, for, for $25,000 to make sure that we have a medical person at virtually all of our varsity events, you gotta be kidding me, from, from a liability standpoint.
I mean, she moves from field to field.
And she actually, if there's not, if there's not a varsity contest, she's going on to the modified, if there, if there's, you know, in the fall, we have so many contests, especially now with the turf, but if you have a game at the turf, and then a game over at the soccer field, and then you have one over at the GLP for modified, she has her cellphone, and unless it's varsity, unless varsity football, she will not leave varsity football, unless, obviously, if it's a serious injury, but she's got her cellphone, and she will take the golf cart, and she will drive down there, and she will go take it, and like I said, from my perspective, she's calling on a Friday night, if you have somebody that injured their ACL, and you're worried, you don't want to send them to the MAC Center, MAC Center's not going to do anything, she is on the phone, sending them with a doctor at UB Orthopedics to go there on a Saturday, I know Mr. Suffin's daughter...
You know, yeah, that was sad.
Mr. Suffin's daughter got hurt during PE class, um, again, nothing wrong with the MAC Center, if anybody works there, um, but I called the trainer, I said, you know, her clavicle's sticking out of her skin, I would really like to send her somewhere, um, and she was like, okay, let me call this person, then I called children, but it was, we worked together on it, and that's where, from, if the trainer's office is in my office with the nurse's office, it's a great, um, relationship, it also is, right now, um, New York State has a return to play for all concussions K through 12, she actually will cover that, so if you called me that your child got hurt in a sledding accident, she's going to go down to the elementary school, she works with Mrs. Smith, and she will do the return to play, so that, that child can return to the gym class, or return to whatever activity, and that the full, the school is fully covered, otherwise, I don't know who exactly would do that return to play.
And the concussion doesn't have to happen in school for that to occur, what you're saying.
It does not have to, because they will have a note that says they are out of gym class, they can't return until there's a return to play, so it's that, or I train, we train nurses how to do a return to play, and it's been a great relationship with the trainer.
A district, a school district that doesn't have a trainer that plays contact sports is crazy in this day and age, and so, big, big advocate, not only for Kristen personally, but just the care that she gives to six different sporting events all over, and we should really get her a better golf cart.
I know. It is that tape.
So that, so she doesn't have to hope that the golf cart makes it...
It goes in reverse now, we're, we're just excited it goes in reverse.
That's exciting.
Marissa, how would you, a district share a trainer?
Well, we would technically...
Through BOSEs?
We would, we would technically say we're sharing, and I would, um, if I got a school district like Pioneer, Pioneer and I would say, hey, Eden's going to have Kristen on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Pioneer's going to have Kristen on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and we just wouldn't change, so we would agree to the coser with BOSEs, but we would set the, the two trainers' schedules.
Gotcha, so there's 100% coverage.
So there's 100% coverage, and we would say, oh yeah, she's going to Pioneer, and then Pioneer and I would talk and say, she's not coming, you have your person, I have my person, we're sharing.
But they could always call her.
Uh, they would have their own person.
They would have their own.
Because you will find that there's a lot of districts that, like, they're training, like, Kristen has actually bounced from two different companies, because previously to, I think, all members of this board, we were part of Athletic Care, and then Kristen was with them, and then when I, um, was told I could receive a grant from UB, I had, I said I wouldn't take it unless I, they hired Kristen, so...
And, and, and having your own trainer allows that trainer to understand the kid, the, the previous injuries that the kid has had, just like your own personal physician.
Develop a relationship with the parents, we had a, a possible concussion on a Friday night on my team, um, and, uh, I asked Kristen, I was like, I've answered these questions, I've answered these questions multiple times, I said, but, you know, the mom would like to talk to you, could you just talk to the mom, and then Kristen followed up with that mom on Saturday afternoon, you know, and...
And, and she knows the kid, and she knows the kid, is, if the kid says, I feel fine, but is acting goofy.
Yeah.
She knows the kid.
That's true.
And so...
Well, and the second col, broken collarbone, uh, she had us into a doctor by nine o'clock the next morning.
Yeah.
Um, we didn't know the second one was really broken, because it wasn't sticking out the skin, but...
Oh my gosh.
Come on, Mrs. Harshel, you can handle that.
So, you're good?
I'm great.
You guys good with Marissa?
You are, you are great.
Thank you, Marissa.
Well, my area isn't as fascinating or interesting as athletics, but we're going to start with utilities, and you're going to see that there's a huge jump in the utilities, in the electric line, it's doubling, and then 102%, that's because during the capital project, we're putting the GLP in Eden Elementary back onto the grid, and that was to be for six months of the 17, 18 school year, so we don't yet have any figures, because that will be happening in February now, so we have to take what was last year for six months, annualize it for the full year, and then give it a 2% trend, just to cover any increases in the utility and the commodities cost, so that's where you're seeing the only increase, all the other, um, utilities, we have been able to manage, and with some of the new upgrades that are going through the different facilities, should help us to keep below the trended increases for the utilities for next year. Then we're going to look at the debt service, which is going to be changing some because of the capital project, you're going to see that we have a $74,000 increase in the ban interest for the current capital project.
Just say what a ban is.
The bond anticipation note is a ban, it's a one-year short-term financing, so while you're building your project, you borrow not the full amount, so...
Because you have to pay your workers.
Right, when you're doing a capital project, it's much like your mortgage payment, the debt service is all about your mortgage payment and your long-term financing, while we're in the capital project, it would be the same as if we were building a house for an individual, and you have all those expenses that are current, but you're not done yet to tell the bank, I'm all set, and this is the total money that I need to borrow, so in the meantime, the district goes out and does a one-year bond anticipation note, what that does is, you can finance these renovations for 15 years, so in the end, if we go out for a bond anticipation note again next year, that will be two years of bond anticipation notes, the longest I can get a bond for when we go to permanent financing will be for 13 more years, because you can only finance your project for a total of 15 years, so there's two options, one option is, you take the interest that you're paying on your bond anticipation note, and instead of doing more work for your project dollars, you put that in the project, and you finance that, well, then you're paying interest upon interest, so in Eden, it's always been prudent, this board has been prudent to say that we're going to just pay each year those bond anticipation interest costs, so that the money is going into the capital project, and we're not paying interest upon interest, so that's why you're seeing that increase, that's just because as we're borrowing more and more money, because we're completing more items, the interest rate gets a little higher, and then all your other, um, the perform, energy performance contract is the purchase of the COGEN, and 18-19 will be the final payments.
Yeah.
So that's why you're seeing such a reduction there, your principal payment is low, as is your interest payment, so overall, and then you're seeing the transfer to debt service, that's the 170,000, that's the increase for the amortization schedules as they work through, so you're having an 8.09% in your debt service or your mortgage payments for the district.
Increase, yeah.
Yes, they're increasing 8.09%, thank you, do you have any questions? I told you mine wasn't as fun as hers. Thank you.
Okay, I'm set? Okay, all right, any requests to withdraw specific items from the consensus items? Let's just find out. All right, once, twice, all right, item four, routine actions, approval of consensus items, that, the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum, A through I.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
I have a question, Barb, what about the addendum J?
That's in new business.
New business, okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carried. Um, yeah, scroll down, all right, this is the time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups, the board will review all statements and respond appropriately at a future meeting, all persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, there is a two-minute time limit.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I brought some of my Jagger's opera to share while I speak, if you wanted to just take a quick peek. She's got a blank paper to speak on.
Could you just state your name for the board, in case you don't know who you are? Perfect, thank you.
My name is Jennifer Camerell, proud parent of ten, for your Hailey Camerell, and I'm here to speak to you, our school board, on behalf of my daughter, my daughter isn't speaking to the, you know, this is awful, Karen, please.
I'm good.
I get emotional, you know?
Sure.
Uh, my daughter isn't speaking to you directly, because she wouldn't be able to complete her statement to you without getting too emotional, yes, I say emotional, because art is a passion of Hailey's, that you are working towards taking away from her, your decision to remove art electives is not only allow, is not allowing her to expand further with her artistic talents, it's not just my daughter that you are affecting, but other talented art students as well, why? You made a decision to bring sixth grade into the junior, senior high school building, but only to penalize the junior, senior students by taking electives away from them, why? You know, sports are not being cut in the same way that music and art are, you want to make sure a student has a full schedule, and in order to do this, it seems that it is more important to offer study hall classes for our students, rather than practice. Over the last few years, several art classes have been cut, advertising, cartooning, advanced draw and paint, ceramics too, and now creative and innovative arts, why? I am told that sixth grade will get art, but only students only take art once in seventh or eighth grade for half a year, then the electives become available... Then the electives become available for our ninth to 12 graders. But what will be left once our students transition from eighth grade to ninth grade? You are already cutting the forces out. As it stands now, there are only three art electives available for our senior high students. You comment that our enrollment keeps dropping. Well, think about it. Why would a family want to come to our school district if there are no elective classes available? Also, if there are no elective classes, how can our students get scholarships? How does this help our kids? It doesn't.
My name is Karen Hall. I'm the parent of two students in the district, 10th grade and 7th grade. And I wanted to just, two quick things. Wanted to give an update on, I don't know, did you mention the advocacy stuff and where we were with...
Not today. We haven't got, no.
... petitions or anything. So those have been mailed out. So through September, September through December, we collected letters and petitions at various events. So thank you to everyone that helped with those things. Concerts and sporting events. So we had 151 letters.
That's good.
And 224 signatures on the petition. And basically, those things were just saying that we wanted to support public school funding and also mandates, full financial funding for mandates. So four packets were put together and mailed to the offices. Last year, I hand-delivered a couple of those, but we mailed them all. One went to the chancellor of the Regents Board of Education in Albany. One went to the governor's office. One went to Senator Gallivan. And one, Seth, went to Assemblyman D.P.H.R. So they all got letters from all the people that signed those. So it was, I haven't heard anything, these just went out last week. So just wanted to give you an update on that. So I think we're, we kind of pulled that all together, and hopefully we got to the right places.
That's a lot of work. That's a lot of work.
It was. It was nice, because we were able to collect one letter from each person. But that then was, we had to label individually all of those to go to each office, you know, with the governor's address on there, with Senator Gallivan's office on there. But they're out, and I think we had a nice, a nice packet to send, so hopefully...
I really appreciate the work that everyone did on that. Because, because we, at the local level, don't have a whole lot of control of what's coming in from the state. And now, when you listen to the news, you hear about the federal cuts. And so, the advocacy is just so incredibly important right now. Because every time I turn on the news, I'm like, get ready, right? If you think it's been bad, it's gonna get worse. And it's really focused on public education. So, and when you see the governor's state aid runs are out, there's no doubt in my mind that Buffalo News is gonna show that there's more money to schools. But if you really take a look at where that money is going, Eden doesn't qualify. We don't have a community school. We don't have some of the things that the money's really focused on. So I really just want to say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. It was a combined effort. You know, a lot of us worked together on that. And so, I think moving forward, we've got the timeframe right, starting in the fall, in September. We were at open houses, we were at concerts, events, and hoping to get those out. I think it was March, maybe, last year? And that's probably a little late, and maybe even now. I don't know. But now's probably a good time to start seeing those budget cut things. So, and I did also want to address my concern for the cuts in the arts program, the things that have happened over the last few years. I'm hoping that the cuts that we're hearing about, maybe this winter proposed, and that they will be able to still offer some of these courses to the art students. Because there are so many careers that really have component of art or creativity, and we're cutting those out from the programs. And so, you know, with my 10th grader, we're starting to think, you know, college, and what kinds of things and courses. And I thought, well, art, she's probably not gonna focus or major in art. But what kind of things would admissions offices at colleges be looking for? So I picked up the phone and I called for Domia State. And really, the portfolio for an art student is what they put together. And they require 20 to 30 pieces in a portfolio. And I can't imagine, with only having one half a year of art in 7th or 8th grade, and maybe one half, you know, a credit some other time, that they would be able to put together that kind of portfolio that would get them into any kind of art program at a college. So please, don't cut all of those, all of those creative art programs for those students. And there are, I appreciate all the AP and the college courses that are being offered. But sometimes, those are pulling people, kids, away from some of these other electives. And given alternatives, I know with certainly Select Course, Jessica has a lot of students. Select Course is opposite statistics. So a lot of kids are taking it as an independent study. And maybe that works for Course, but I don't know how that works for Art. You know, you can come in and maybe sing a song after school, and practice and get those things. But, so I just wanted to say that, express my concern, and I hope that those are just maybe proposed cuts.
This, this board has not had conversation about staffing yet? Okay, so what I think that you're seeing or hearing, including the mom who tried to speak so emotionally a few moments ago, is what you're looking at is a budget staying status quo to next year. We just got our governor's state aid runs today. But because of the incoming sixth grade, we had to get a jump on the master schedule, just to see if we could even do it, just to see what a staff would look like. But there's been no formal conversations about staffing up or down so far. Okay?
I just wanted to support the music and arts course.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. I'm Cherry Stover. I teach at the Consumer Science here. I didn't really plan on speaking this evening, so I'm just gonna kind of wait in here. But I just wanted to add a moment to the opening of the electives. And I, as far as I know, there's been no more of those cuts. But in the past few years, we've taken a huge hit in my department. I'm a singleton, I'm the only one who teaches in my department. And we went from having a full-time teacher at the high school level, as well as full-time in middle school, to now just me. And yes, we are bringing home sixth grade, which I am not privileged to be teaching. However, the electives that have been cut, you know, for the high school students to possibly take, has been huge. So, you know, we're not having any more cuts or anything. But I would like to put it out there, that maybe if we look at the possibility of having a little bit of an incline, because student enrollment for selection has taken place. And the desire is there to be in both, and, and the Consumer Science electives. And both of them tend to play off of each other. And give students a lot of opportunity to see things that they're good at, what they're interested in, and be prepared to learn. So everybody's not an A.T. student. And we need to also, you know, foster our middle-of-the-ground kids. Our middle-of-the-road, if you want to call them. But I just want to put it out there that we have taken a huge hit. It's impossible to give our kids what they want, where we have to service our middle school students as well with one person.
Thank you, Cherry. Thank you.
I was gonna speak either, but I told you about Ms. Stover. I'm Kathleen Gage. I have one child in college and two in the district now. And just to reflect on what a wonderful teacher you are in the department, my college student is home from school right now. And he was in the kitchen doing something. He says, what did you think I learned at school? I learned how to cook, I learned how to do my laundry, you know? Even though we, as parents, encouraged and fostered that, I mean, he was cutting up an apple, he lived a swan, he knew like about geometry, you know? So you think that even though we're parents who teach this, it's very fundamental, I think, that they learn it, that we're sending these kids off, and they can be independent to accomplish. So, thank you. And, you know, I have an issue with the elective, so it does really cut down what we offer these kids. You know, if it's not, if he wants motorcraft sports, what are you gonna do with that if you're some students?
Anybody else? Moving on to new business. Item A, appointments. All appointments will not be effective, and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Here are the recommended motions. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Kathleen Gage be permanently appointed as a microcomputer repair technician effective February 1, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? She's been a fabulous addition to our school district. Really thrilled to have her here. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item two, permanent appointment. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Kevin Lex be permanently appointed as a microcomputer repair technician effective February 1, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? Also, a huge, really fun addition to our technology department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item B, accept quote for fitness center equipment. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a quote for fitness center equipment be accepted from G&amp;G Fitness in the amount of $58,831.39.
Second.
Can you just clarify where that money's coming from?
Absolutely. So this money's, you want to speak? Go ahead. Yeah, this money is coming out of the capital project. It is part of the project that was voted by the voters of the district authorized. So, and I also want to thank Ms. Velcaro, because she did a phenomenal job of making something affordable. Even though this is a huge number, the amount of equipment she's getting is phenomenal.
So, so this fitness center should be online by March or April for our own students here and our own staff. So we have a lot of work to do in terms of creating a contract, just in terms of our own people able to use it. Since there's so much construction happening over the summer, it won't be open to the public. And then in the spring, the original intent that went forward on the referendum for the capital project was for this to be a community school fitness center. And so, the intent is for us to create a contract with an outside organization who can manage this fitness center in the evening, since we're not in that business, and hopefully bring some revenue into the district as well. It's also here as another phys ed opportunity for our students. So right now, between being able to get our kids outside on the turf, and having this fitness center, having the upstairs work on the gym, and then also the gym on the first floor, we should be able to do a really good job with phys ed in this building. That's been a little tight and cumbersome for us over the years. Anything else?
How did you get such a good quote from Gronkowski?
Don't bring up that name, all right?
Okay.
There's only two pieces of equipment that are Gronks, right?
Well, they almost are.
I know.
But it was, they wanted to do business with us.
That's good. That's good.
And they were our other quotes, and they were willing to finagle. So it's actually, it would pass as a fair settlement.
That's good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Good job. Item C, accept donation of books. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a donation of 50 books valued at $500 be accepted from Jennifer Tyloc for the use in the junior, senior high school library.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item D, approve creation of library reserve. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a liability reserve be created at a planned funding level of $870... What? What is that? She's lost with the extra number. Yeah. Is that 870,000?
Yes, that's a comma.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item E, approve creation of workers' compensation reserve. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a workers' compensation reserve be created at a planned funding level of $1,261,640.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item F, approve reserve plan. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a reserve plan for 2017, '18 be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to point out and thank all members of the Board of Education. They've worked very hard on this reserve plan with me. I've been honored to be able to be part of developing a savings plan. But unfortunately, the work is just beginning, because this is meant to be a living document that will be brought back to the Board of Education each year to be reviewed, balances to be adjusted, so that we know we are setting aside money for the future, for economic downturns, to prevent us from having to go back to the taxpayers or having significant cuts. It'll be used prudently, and I really appreciate all the hard work from this Board of Education.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item G, approve accessing of technology equipment. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, technology equipment as presented be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? Do you want to talk about that for a minute? I don't know anything about it. Oh, okay. We're good? You're good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. I keep losing my place. Item H, approve accessing of diesel loader and box scraper. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 1998 Hyundai Diesel Loader 86 HP articulating with one-yard material bucket and box scraper be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to point out that thanks to the prior approval of the Board of Education, we were able to put this on Auctions International, and we got $20,600 for a piece of equipment that was bought in 1998.
Wow, really good deal.
That's a lot of money.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item I, approve accessing of miscellaneous items. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate, items 1 through 10. Good idea, John. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Again, this is just a way of taking the things that are no longer applicable or utilized daily in the district, and turning them into some money that we can use for repurposing for other things.
Sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item J, approve amended 2017, '18 school calendar. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2017, '18 school calendar be amended as presented.
Second.
So the only change that's in, I'm sorry. No, that's all right. You want to say the word? No, I don't. Okay. The only change that's in here is changing the day of the parent-teacher conferences, because we had a snow day. I anticipate, as we go through the school year, that there might be other ones. But, but because this affected such a critical day, it's important for us to have it officially on the calendar. Sounds good. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item six, information and proposals, the business report.
Hi, I'd like to first report happily that last week, all the cameras were installed. Every single bus in our fleet has, I believe, three cameras per bus.
Four cameras per bus on the new systems. There are three interior and one forward-facing out of the windshield.
Wow. Four.
I stand corrected.
They're amazing, too.
They're amazing.
The clarity is incredible. There you go.
And where they're nice is they help prevent any liability claims. They help the district if there should be an accident, God forbid, or there should be a student issue. It helps to be able to know what happened on the bus, more than just a little cell phone footage. It's all these cameras will help with that. So thank you for your support in that. And then, we're gonna start to talk taxes. At the next Board of Education meeting, we'll be talking about the property tax cap. And I'll be asking you to approve a projected levy percentage increase. So, that being said, the first thing I knew a couple of weeks ago was, in these complicated formula, there's a tax-based growth factor. Every year, that's put in there, and that's for the new building or assessment values, not reassessments, but new assessments for the Eden. And that went from .0055 last year to .008. So we got a little bump there.
Somebody moved in?
Apparently. Then, the property tax cap this year, the CPI index is at 2.13. So we get a 2% property tax cap maximum in the calculation. So when we go through all of this, what do my preliminary calculations show? I can raise .46 of a percent of...
As a levy.
Levy.
Cap.
Yes.
Okay.
And the total dollar value with that for the entire district is $66,000. So, it's kind of a little light on what we can buy with $66,000 for a district, but there will be a full presentation to the board on February 13th, and at that time, you'll be asked to approve it because I have a March 1st deadline to tell the state what the decision of my Board of Education was, whether or not we're planning to exceed the cap. That being said, at quarter to three this evening, I found out that the governor's state aid runs were available, so I have some very preliminary information for you because I try to get it in your hands as soon as possible. But I want to start with, we're going to do a quick history lesson on state aid, and as people have been speaking about cuts, these are the reasons why. In 2008, 2009, until 2016, 2017, foundation aid was frozen. Those aids, that aid was developed as a result of a lawsuit, and it was supposed to create fair and equitable state aid funding so that every district would be able to afford the same luxuries for their students.
Didn't work.
That didn't work. They froze the aid in '08, '09. So, from 2010, 11th school year, until 1617, the state came up with what they called the gap elimination adjustment.
Or the GEA, as you know it.
The GEA simply did this. The state went through and calculated what it owed districts for state aid so they could have a free and equitable education. Then it said, "There's not enough money in the checkbook," so that would be like you looking at your bills for the month and saying, "I owe $3,000, but I'm only going to pay $2,000 of it because I don't have any more money to give." That's what the state did for years under the gap elimination adjustment. So, when I got my runs this afternoon, I was initially shocked and surprised that there were no gimmicks on there. There was a little increase in the foundation aid. The foundation aid went up 1.92%. Remember, I just told you it was frozen until, from '08, '09 through 1617. Then we have what are called the expense-driven aids. Those are aids like transportation, the building aid, which is where the state helps us afford our mortgage payments, excess cost aid, which is for the special education students that they mandate us to give extra services to, but they really don't give us equitable funding for. And then we have instructional material aids, which are things like your software aid, your hardware aid, textbooks, things along those lines. And they appear on the governor's runs to be budgeted higher than I'm anticipating we're going to receive.
You've heard that before, right? Do you remember hearing that year after year, the transportation aid, but don't plan on it, the building aid, but don't plan on it? It's no different.
Correct. And the problem is, the data that he came with was our budget. The governor's, division of budget does the governor's runs, and basically, the numbers they're looking at were our budgeted numbers. Well, once again, the Board of Education and the district has been very conservative in its spending, so therefore, when we look at what we will receive at year-end based on this year's spending, I believe that that's going to lower it. So, in the end, if you were to look at the governor's runs, it says we're going to receive 9.48% increase in aid, and I really think the number's going to be closer to 5% increase, which is still an increase, and it will help to prevent some of the cuts that the district has experienced in the past. But what I really want to say is, what I will be bringing you at the next Board of Education is those calculations that I personally do to see where I really think the numbers are going to align, and those will be, we will use the most conservative numbers to create our budget so that we do not overspend and have a problem with the taxpayers having to fund more, as it is their share of the budget this year has been doing quite a bit for any of the excesses. So, again, the numbers are out, they're very preliminary. Because they came out at, I got them, you know, quarter to three, it's kind of hard to get everything ready for a Board of Education meeting and do my due diligence of reviewing and such, so I will have them for you at the February 13th Board meeting as part of the presentation.
So, just to reiterate, the responsibility of the Board at the February Board meeting is to do what?
The responsibility of the Board will be to look at the property tax cap calculation and to approve a levy percentage increase based on that calculation.
Okay. So, if there's something that you need ahead of time, please call Laura, because she's going to be asking you to, she's going to be giving you information and asking you to vote on it in the same evening, which I discourage, but the timing doesn't allow for anything different here.
Okay. And then, once again, I would just like to thank the Board for adopting the reserve plan, allowing me the opportunity to work with you on the savings plan for the district. And I also want to assure you, the goal of a reserve plan is not just to amass savings because before things are put into savings, other items will be looked at. One-time purchases, if I have a surplus in the budget of, let's say, $10,000, of course I can't hire another teacher, and that's a one-year surplus. But one of the, some of the things that we can look at to do with that if we have surpluses are painting classrooms, getting the buildings more spruced up, replacing fixtures, simple fixtures such as toilet paper holders, things like that that have fallen to decay because of the tightness of the funding cut. But if there's a little bit of extra, we can plan, put some in our reserve plan, and save some for some of these other purchases. In my last district, one of the things that we, my superintendent wanted was Z-Spaces technology, which is to help the kids with the science technologies. We'll be looking at parking lot resurfacing and striping, things that should be going on routinely that we haven't been able to budget for because the budgets have been so tight. But if we can be conservative in our use of the money, maybe we can have a little bit each year to set aside for some one-time items. We can't do recurring because, of course, recurring would make our budget unsound, but to do one-time purchases would be a good use of some of the hard-earned savings from the district.
Excellent. Questions for Laura?
Okay. Great job, by the way. Excellent. Very clear.
So, I have a few items to just bring everyone up to date on. So, as I stated at the parent information night, and I'll state it again, super excited to be working with Erie County Co-op and Diane Held, who is an Eden resident, on the Erie County Farm-to-School Project. We are one of three schools, the fourth school being the Buffalo City Schools, to be awarded this grant. It's a pretty decent grant. Alden, Springville, and Eden applied for it back in December, well, actually, in October, and we were just notified last week that we'll get it. And basically, the premise of that grant, if you've seen it through Buffalo Schools, is to use local farms to bring food into our own cafeteria. Super excited about this. Part of our ag rebuild in Eden, so I can't speak highly enough about the whole process and for Diane helping us on that. The second piece I want to talk about is the update to the Eden Elementary School auditorium. The scaffolding is down, which now you can actually see the ceiling. We actually took out extra ceilings that we didn't know were up there. We found decay that we didn't know was up there. We got face-to-face with the gnomes that some people don't know are up there. I have pictures, they're bigger than me. But we do now have a really nice HVAC system, and I speak of it for Grandma and Grandpa who can come and watch their kids in concerts or a musical with air conditioning. We also have a sound system that's going into the back of that next. It did cause us to remove a few seats, but it's a decent-sized auditorium and to give us some handicap seating in the back. Because we were prudent in our spending, and we didn't find any cars or bodies or cows under anything up so far, we did find a tractor, remember. We have enough money to paint the back of that auditorium stage black, which will hide a lot of the sins of a white background, refinish and paint the floor and paint the railing in the pit. So, we're super excited about what that's going to bring to us. On the third one, and Lucinda, I give you permission to correct me where I'm wrong on this because I seem to get the words just a little confusing to the audience. What we did in December was to prep for a cut over to National Grid at the elementary school. If you've seen that big, huge equipment going on in the parking lot, what that is, is that basically allows our district to do two things. It allows the elementary school to work off of National Grid, and it also allows for a backup generator to fully power the elementary school. We did not cut over in December, but we got all the prep work done for it, and the contractors did such a great job that we really weren't down four days, we were really only down two. But we did all the prep work by turning our power, our lights, our computers, everything down, just in case we had a problem with the shut-off. So, now, what we're going to do in February is exactly the same thing at GLP. GLP is a little different, even though we're doing exactly the same thing, because they don't have a full backup generator. But so, not only are we prepping for the cut over at GLP, we're actually doing the cut over at GLP, and National Grid will get on-site. So, because National Grid is getting on-site there, my hope is that will be done in two or three days, but most likely, GLP will be closed for the entire week. But once that is done during the February break, we will be running off the grid at the elementary school, the bus garage, and GLP. That is part of what Laura was talking about earlier with the uptick in the electrical charges, because we know that we haven't had to do that because we've been on the COGEN since 2005. The positive of this, though, is that we will be eligible for some nice sort of grants that we've not been eligible for before. Is there anything else you want to add on that?
No, the only other thing is, is when we go to this billing, we're going to go to the school and municipal energy co-op to get a reduced cost for that electric when it comes back.
Excellent. So, one project that Dave Martin and Laura have been working on is changing over some of our electric to LED, so that we can be ready for that, too. And then, in addition to that, not that you have it, although, thank you Cheryl for giving me the latest adopted one from Bosie's, the calendar for next year for Bosie's is out. Bosie's tries to agree, Bosie's 1 and Bosie's 2, on the same district calendar, on the same Bosie's calendar. If you remember, a couple of years ago, Bosie's 1, which is Hamburg Schools, was on a different calendar than Bosie's 2, which is Eden. And we have cousins, we have family that border on the lines of Hamburg and Eden, so having two different vacation times for February for what is considered the spring break was just horrible.
It was a nightmare.
And so, they're trying not to do that anymore, so it takes a little bit longer to get that from Bosie's, but once we do, we know that everyone's on the same page. So, we're on draft three or four of our own calendar for next year, but what I want to say is, is that what's coming out in the February Board of Regents guidance is a proposal to change the way that attendance is calculated for state aid. That is, in part, a request from superintendents across the state because we like to generate aid on as many school days as we can, but half-days have always been our problem. So, if you think about it from the elementary school, gone were the days from years ago where the last, let's say, the very couple of last days of the week in June, when you could bring in students for a half-day and then have teachers start to close their classrooms. Really burdensome to an elementary teacher to have students all day until the very last day of school, but you couldn't generate aid any other way on that. So, this is attempting to fix that problem in the last week of June and also on a holiday week. So, we have not historically had half-days on Thanksgiving week because we can't get aid on a shortened week. These new guidance, which I assume will be adopted by the Board of Regents in March, will allow us to go at a total number of hours and still maintain 180 days, which means that you can pick and choose where you think that your half-days could be, not half-days, but there's an awful lot of questions wrapped around it. Right now, what we need to do for our next iteration of the school calendar is to count the number of hours that our students are in instruction, which means that you can include lunch, you can include recess, you can include the prep time, getting into, you know, homeroom, maybe, I'm not sure, and still generate aid on that. But still pushing enough hours in it that if, in fact, you go over on snow days, that you have the ability to still get your aid on everything. So, it's a good move. It's cumbersome. I wish that they'd come up with something easier, but at least they're listening. And then, my last one is just to thank Lucinda, Jeff, all the sixth-grade teachers, all the elective area teachers, and everybody who came to the second parent information night for the middle school. This has been an initiative since I got here in 2013, is to create a whole-child STEM-focused middle school of grades 6, 7, and 8. And so, I just want to say thanks for doing that, and I know that those information nights have been really good. And to come back and say that it's a, what we know with bringing sixth grade here is that people are super excited about the possibilities. There is no doubt in my mind that as we move forward in our budget talks in the next couple of weeks, that you will hear from principals, from me, from somebody about the budget implications of not just bringing sixth grade forward, but also of what our students are asking for. So, I just want to say it's only January. Normally, we're already into March by the time we have these conversations. That's all I have.
Okay. Item C, the board report, roundtable?
Anything for roundtable? Haley, anything? What's going on at school?
No.
Quiet, yes?
Nothing.
Nothing? That's okay. That's all right.
I did want to talk advocacy for a second. Karen and the Music Boosters did a great job getting all of those letters and petitions out, and I think she had posed a question to me, and I haven't had a chance to respond because I really didn't know how to... She asked where we go from here, which I think is a very good question. Where do we go? I mean, the fight has always been GEA, foundation aid, so I didn't get a chance to attend...
I can answer that for you.
You could.
I can.
You can.
There was a time many, many years ago where the state funded 50% of what our needs were. We're approximately 38?
Forty.
Forty?
High 30, close to 40, I think.
Yeah, 39%. If the state funded 50% of what we need, we could do everything you're asking for.
Well, and that's what I, I didn't get a, so did you attend the last Erie County, in December, the legislative meeting?
I did.
Okay. Because that was, I did read the notes in the minutes from there, and then there was an article that basically Erie County Association of School Boards is asking all local representatives to commit to public education. And in the article, they talked about how the decrease in funding from the state, coupled with the increase in the local burden, has really created a rift between school boards and communities, which I think has been evident almost anywhere you go. And that's not the purpose. The purpose of the school board isn't to, you know, create animosity, it's, you know, just to be an oversight, but that's not what it's been for most school boards for a long time now. So, in that article, Dr. Frazier is asking for the burden to shift back to New York State. He's asking for New York State to be a full partner in supporting public education. There is an upcoming dessert forum with Dr. Timms the end of the month.
It's wonderful. If you've never been, I highly recommend that you come.
Yeah, he's a wealth of knowledge. And then, and it will talk about preliminary budget overviews, and then there's another legislative meeting in February, so I'm hoping to get some more ideas, but that seemed